Good evening. You are watching the 2023 Concord City Council at-large debate. I'm Tony Shanella, the editor of Concord, New Hampshire Patch. Thank you so much for tuning in. This debate is being sponsored by Patch as well as Concord TV and the New England Take podcast. For the next hour or so, we'll be speaking with the five candidates who are on the ballot in all 10 wards of the city vying for two four-year term seats. The five candidates will be allowed one-minute opening and closing statements, and then I'll answer or I'll ask questions and we'll get answers in between. Let's meet the 2023 candidates in alphabetical order. We have Nathan Fennessey, the incumbent, Taylor Hall, Matthew Hicks, Kevin Porter, I'm sorry, Judith Kurtz and Kevin Porter. My bad, text wrong. Okay. Gentlemen, is it cool if we let ladies go first since we have one?
Always.
Sure. Judith?
Hi, Tony. Thanks for hosting this event and thanks to Concord TV for sharing their studios. And also thank you to the fellow candidates. This is a really exciting opportunity to be able to talk about our positions, and I think it'll be of great benefit to viewers. My name is Judith Kurtz. I grew up in a small town, mostly farmers and middle-class working people like my own parents. I was one of five children raised on a single income. And I went away to college, met my husband, and we've lived around the Northeast before we chose to settle here in Concord, New Hampshire to raise our children. We chose Concord because we loved a livable, beautiful city with recreational opportunities inside and nearby the city, and also local family farms that remind us what is the best of community. I'm running for city council because I believe I can serve as a voice for the people. I believe in transparency and government and consensus building, and I'm eager to get to know each of you and the folks who are already serving and those who may be elected with me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to go with Kevin and then we'll go that way, okay?
Okay. Well, thank you, Tony, for hosting, and thanks to the fellow candidates for running and being here. My name is Kevin Porter. For the last 20 years, I've worked in community development finance, helping to expand access to capital to make housing more accessible and energy efficient. I currently work for a national organization based here in Concord called Rock USA. We work with homeowners and mobile home parks to buy the land underneath their homes and to operate their communities as co-ops. I also served on the board of Clean Energy New Hampshire for six years, including two years as vice chair. And it's really these two areas, housing and energy, that are so critical in our city right now and are really so driven by local policy and local decisions that I'd like to apply my experience and training to help move our city forward. I've also engaged with the city on a number of issues such as governance and fiscal responsibility. I look forward to talking through those issues tonight, so I thank you again.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Good evening. Hello, everybody. My name is Matt Hicks. I'm in my old high school, which is a little surreal to be here in this role. I grew up in Concord, East Concord, Ward 10. I live there now. After college, returned. Lived downtown in Pearly Street and lived in Dunkley Street. So I've seen different sides of the city of Concord. Why did I come back? Came back to raise a family in a city where I had all the opportunities that one could want in a small city in New Hampshire. And why get into this role? So in my role as an educator in the city, I know firsthand needs of childcare. In my role in the planning board in the city, in the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, and in the State House, I have seen the housing crisis firsthand at the legislative level and also trying to find employees in the city of Concord who can't afford to live here. And so for me, the number one issue, in addition to some issues that others have talked about, is affordability. Property tax rates are climbing, energy rates are climbing. Try to find an affordable house in the city of Concord or rent an apartment. It's very difficult. So for me, this issue is about my hometown, and it's about trying to continue to make this the best small city that we can. Thanks.
My name is Taylor Hall. I want to first express gratitude to Tony, Patch, Concord Community TV, Concord High School for hosting this event. They do commendable work. I thank the other candidates here. Looking forward to getting to know all of you. Awesome that we're all here, ready to serve our community in whatever way we know best. I've lived in Concord since 2018, lived in New Hampshire 10 years this month. This is a place that I call home. Growing up, my parents always instilled in me a sense of community. My wife and I have chosen this to be our community. Everyone here all agrees what the issues are, but we also need to look forward. We need to make sure that this place is a great place for our children, that there's leadership that can make Concord a great place for the next generation and continue to make this place a place that thrives.
Hi, I'm Nathan Fennessey. I'm one of the current at-large counselors. I want to thank Tony and Patch for having us out, Concord TV. I am an attorney at Preity Flaherty here in town. I've got a wife and three sons who all attend public schools here in Concord. I was first elected in 2019, and I ran the first time because I wanted to continue to make Concord a great place to live, work, and raise a family. And I'm hoping to serve a second term on the council to continue to pursue those goals. One of the things that I've seen in the last two to three years, particularly coming out of COVID, is that increasingly, all of the great things we have in the city, paying for it increasingly is coming onto our residents. With COVID, we had an increase in vacancy rates with our commercial properties. And so I think what I'd like to see in the next term, if I'm so lucky to be reelected, is to really focus on economic development, try and increase that commercial property tax base so that we can continue to develop the amenities that make this such a great place to live.
Excellent. Thank you so much. There's a lot of issues to discuss, but I think one of the most important ones right out of the gate is that, you know, no matter what anybody thinks of Mayor Jim Boulay, him leaving the council after so many years is not only going to create a void, but potential for instability with a new mayor who will be in the role, as well as at least four city counselors. Nathan, let's start with you, and then we're going to go this way. How will you work, if you're reelected, to ensure stable council proceedings and governance with all of the new people?
Sure. So I mean, I think one of the most important things right away is regardless, if I'm lucky to be reelected, the new members, I will immediately reach out to, to get to know them. I think it's really important, I have found, to get to know people outside of the council table, you know, whether it's a coffee or lunch, and understand sort of where they're coming from. I mean, I think the transition from Mayor Boulay is going to be very important. He's done such a great job. I think he certainly left the city in a much better place than it was when he first was elected as mayor. And certainly, it's my goal to continue down that path. I mean, I think we've done a lot of great things. I can't take responsibility for the improvements to Main Street, but that's just one of the great things that I think has taken place during his term. And I hope, whether I'm on the council or not, that my fellow candidates here will strive to do the same thing, because I think we're on a great path. And I think continuing the dialogue, continuing to get to know the people around the table with you makes for a much better decision-making process.
Taylor?
I agree that Jim has done a tremendous amount for the city, and he leaves a very large set of shoes to fill for whoever's next. I think it's very important, whoever is elected, be it incumbents or newcomers, to focus on maintaining the integrity of our government, focus on strong leadership, and making sure that our city continues to provide the services that it does, continue to grow those services in a way that's as revenue-neutral as possible, and also listen to the voices of the community so we can continue to build the community in the best of ways possible.
Right. Thank you. So Mayor Boulay, 26 years, I believe. It's a long time, and there will be big shoes to fill. I think the people who are running, I think, are prepared to do that. Certainly, there are enough incumbents and people still serving the city council to help us if we're fortunate enough to get elected into the role. I think that we need to take the city council, as well as the other boards in the city, to the people more. I think we can go on the road. I think we can go to Pennacook. I think we can go to Broken Ground School. We can go to the Heights. And we can educate people about ways in which they can be part of the government, because we're residents of the city of Concord, just like they are. And so hopefully, with a little more education, a little bit more transparency, that we can improve the city.
I agree regarding consensus building, relationship building, and bringing the table to the people, because it's not always enough to say that the table is open. I think that any newcomers need to do their due diligence and work hard to learn about what's been going on in city council. And I also see it as an opportunity to look at what we want for the next 10 years, to revisit the master plan, to look at some things that have been maybe in a holding pattern, and educate everyone on the council, and then have them reach out to educate all of their constituents to work towards progress, and thinking specifically of zoning, and also to pick up economic development in terms of fighting the lull that we experienced as a city during COVID.
Yes. Well, I've been hanging out in Concord for 20 years, even though we moved back full-time in 2014. And I think a lot of people want to see that success continue and see Concord continue to thrive. I think there are a couple of things I would point to. Speaking from my own experience, my own career, I travel all over the country, from rural Montana to South Texas to northern Vermont, working with people from all walks of life. And we may have slightly different views on certain things, but at the end of the day, we're there for a common purpose, which is to preserve their community for affordable housing, and we focus on that, and we get it done. One thing that's really special about Concord is that it's kind of a small town in some ways. I think we all here probably have at least one or two mutual friends or colleagues. And I think we're all here to see Concord thrive and to see Concord do well. So I think that there's a lot to be said for that.
Great. Excellent answers. Thank you very much. So I'm working on a story about the homeless crime problem, which literally has been exploding in our city. And I was stunned to find out that last year, more than 20% of the arrests in the city were people who are homeless. Many of the charges were serious crimes, not vacancies, although there were many trespassings and other charges, but drug dealings, drug dealing, arson, assaults, and even murders. Frustration has been boiling over with a number of our residents, especially due to camping on private property and the inability to be able to quickly clean up what are becoming hazardous waste spots with... And we have a fire department that doesn't want to go into camps because they're booby-trapped, and they don't know if their canister, oil canisters, excuse me, propane tanks or heating canisters are going to explode. In fairness to all of you, as well as your colleagues, you're all volunteers, but you know, the state is spending millions and millions of dollars on mental health and housing and other issues. But everybody's going to come to you, because you're the ones who speak to the city manager to get these places cleaned up, to get people moved along. What can you do more than the council is doing now to address the problem? And Kevin, we'll start with you, and let's make it easy on me, and we'll go to the left from there.
Sure. Serious, serious concern, for sure. As I said, I've worked in housing for 20 years. I formerly served on the board of the Connecticut Coalition to End Homelessness, and there are a few things I'll talk about. First, one bright spot in the fight amongst homelessness has been actually homelessness amongst veterans. It's actually decreased in recent years, and rightly so. We should take care of those who have, who have served us. The reason for that decrease has been that a housing-first approach has been taken, which makes all the sense in the world. It's hard to get a job or store your clothes or anything else if you don't have a place to rest your head. That may be easier said than done. It's very hard to build housing, but we need to find it easier, find a way to make it easier to build housing. Secondly, I know the Concord Coalition and homelessness is doing really good work, and to help them expand and coordinate with other agencies, particularly around data management and tracking, I think is really key. And thirdly, I'd say make sure we support our first responders. I think police officers and firefighters are dealing with all sorts of things that maybe on the job 20 years ago, you didn't have to, and it takes a toll. It takes a physical and mental toll, and we need to be aware of that and make sure they have the resources to do their job.
Thank you. Judith?
Yes. So we definitely need to support public safety. I know that recruitment and retention have been huge issues in Concord, as they have been around the state. And one way that we can support public safety is by having affordable housing so that folks can come and live and work here. In terms of homelessness, I'd like to see the city council steering committee, which has been monitoring the situation, change their remit to a more action-oriented plan, perhaps leading in getting all of the agencies and nonprofits and first responders and the hospital, all of the folks in the city who care deeply and who are working in different ways to work together so that they're not siloed in their efforts, nor are they duplicating or perhaps even unknowingly undermining each other's work. So I would encourage the city council to look at revisiting the role of that steering committee and also in supporting public safety through supporting first responders. And I'm very interested in the social worker that the police department just hired. I think tracking the data around the role of that social worker, because as they address issues of mental health and perhaps addiction, we free up other officers to respond to violent crime. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, I agree, the master of social work position that was created is a step in the right direction. For as long as I've been here, I have always heard that emergency responders are underfunded, and it's true. We are down more than a dozen, I think I heard, 18 or 19 positions in the police department. I don't know how we solve these problems if we don't have the resources and the personnel to do it. I also think we need to take a hard look at the unhoused population that is by choice and that is not by choice, and increasing the supply of housing. Then we will have the ability to put those that are not unhoused by choice into homes. So that supply, we have a lot of housing being built right now in the city of Concord all over, and that needs to continue, housing of all types, but especially workforce housing and housing to support these people that are in transition back into housing.
So this is a difficult question to answer in a minute. I'm going to do the best that I can.
I'll give you five more seconds.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And it's complicated, because it's one of those things that evolves over time. The solutions that, you know, were addressed even five years ago have changed. Certainly, you know, we have nothing but empathy for these people that are in this situation. I know, you know, at points in my life, I've been, you know, but one or two paychecks away from being in a similar position. And we want to help out the people that need that assistance. However, you know, I'd be curious, and you said you're working on a report, how many of these, especially the ones that are living in the camps or committing the crimes, how many are from our community? How many are being offered services that aren't able to take advantage of them, being retrained for work, being able to be put in housing? So I think strengthening the ability of our services, fire, police, social work, to be able to go after these communities would be one solution. And again, strengthening the social services that we have in the community to help those that truly desperately need help.
So there's no easy answer, right? And there's no simple solution to the problem. A couple of things, as was mentioned, I mean, public safety, right now, we're down, I think it's 19 officers with the police department. So we can't proceed with that level of staffing forever. We're going to have to devote time and attention to not only attracting, but retaining talented officers who, you know, so we can cover all parts of the city. I mean, if we, if we can't sufficiently patrol all around the city, we're not going to be able to prevent some of these crimes from occurring. Second piece with respect to housing, I think we've made some big strides, at least in the last four years. The number of units that are coming online, both market rate, affordable workforce, it's very significant. You know, Langdon Ave is, you know, in process right now. There's approved projects out on Pembroke Road and Sheep Davis Road. We've completed, or we haven't completed, but Phase Two of Pennacook Landing was completed. So there's, there's been an increase in supply of units. Obviously, there's a lot more that we need to do. The vacancy rate is unbelievably low still at this point, but we got to continue to increase the supply, work with the coalition, work with the other partners to make sure we know who these people are, and facilitate, to the extent possible, these housing opportunities for them.
One of the strengths of the mayor and several counselors now, councils now actually, has been keeping the tax rate close to 3% annually, an increase of 3%. And last year, it was a little less than 4. But a new solid waste contract is on the horizon. We love bad news, right? Okay. So, you know, it could, from what I'm hearing with some of the potential numbers, is that it could increase the annual tax rate anywhere from 5% to 8% on top of the normal 3% to 4%. While there will be some personal savings when we get rid of the purple bag tax, you know, property taxpayers now are paying some of the highest property taxes in history, and renters are paying that indirectly too. Nathan, let's go with you and say, you know, what are you going to do to tackle this problem to keep from having a 12% tax increase next year? And that's going to be permanent, too, probably.
So, so one of the things that I did was I supported as part of, it was part of the budget process, was actually increasing the price on the purple bags this year. And the reason for that was to try to eliminate this, you know, steep cliff that we're going to have in two years when we move to a, to a new contract. So part of that increase was intended to, you know, create a gentle slope in two years, so we're not looking at a 5% to 8% increase automatically. We need to build up some of the reserves in the solid waste fund so that we have the capability to handle it. Now, the big question we're going to have is, okay, if we're moving to bins, what size bins are we going to use? The, you know, single person who only has one bag a week, are they going to be paying the same amount as the person who's got, you know, three bins outside of their house and they're overfilling every, every week? Personally, I think the purple bags were great, because the people who are heavy users are incurring the costs associated with, with their trash disposal. I have some concerns about moving away from that model and how that's going to impact reduced reusing and recycling, so.
Cool. So I am also a fan of the purple bag model. It is a consumption-based model, so the person that is throwing out more does pay more and is contributing to that service overall. You know, is it fair? How do you determine, you know, the person that just throws out one, you know, small couple-gallon bag a week versus the person who's taking out, you know, I myself, several things of cat litter and shavings from our chickens? You know, I'm going to be someone else's bearing the brunt of my cost, whereas with the purple bag system, you know, I'm paying my own cost. So I really think that that is the most fair system, you know, recycling, other associated services related to that, I think, really are the best system.
Yeah, I think consumption fees or taxes, if you will, probably one of the fairest ways to go about it. However, at some point, we're going to have to pay for this. And the answer is not to pay less for a long time and then to have that cliff, right? Trying to maybe ramp up to that change. But at some point, we have to deal with our solid waste. If we're not going to increase recycling, if we're not going to reduce our usage, live more responsibly in that way, we're going to pay for it. And unfortunately, maybe the increase will incentivize people to live more responsibly and more sustainably.
I also liked purple bags, because the data showed that they really did work to reduce what people threw out. I sit on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee as a community member, and one of the very interesting conversations that we're having right now is to look at food waste diversion. Almost 80% of what people throw away is food waste. And if we can markedly reduce what we are throwing away, then we can save money. And we can incentivize that in some creative ways. We'll have to put our heads together, but we can talk about different-sized bins, we can talk about incentives for participating in a composting or food waste diversion program. And we do have to deal with it, and if we can make choices now that help us deal with it in an environmentally friendly and economically friendly way, it will pay dividends in the long run.
Sure. Well, I'm a big fan of the purple bag program as well, and I think, as they say, show me the incentive, I'll show you the outcome. So I think we really need to look at ways to incentivize the reduction of waste. I think part of your question was about property taxes overall and not just solid waste, or is that not?
Yep.
Yeah, so I think there's both the revenue side...
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to that. Keep going.
Yeah. So on the revenue side, as well as the expense side. On the revenue side, I think we have to look at some of the major institutions in Concord that own large amounts of real estate and make sure that they're paying their fair share, make sure it's keeping up with the development at those institutions, and there are many of them. On the expense side, I think we have to look at where the city of Concord spends money and making sure that's not competing with the private sector, making sure the city remains in the business of city government and not creeping into other activities, which would be best left to the private sector.
Great. So I was going to circle back with you about your vote on the, on the purple bags, because...
I figured your mind.
Yeah. I'm not a fan. As someone who's always recycled and recycled, we've always recycled at my house for 40-plus years in the city, and, and also I compost as well, and I'm lucky enough to have a large enough lot that I can, which is a big, which is a big help. But one of the things we noticed during coronavirus was the fact that the bags are really terrible, and we didn't have to buy them anymore. And in fact, at my house, which was about one and a half week, you know, two, one week, one, one week, just about, with a family of four, I could do one hefty, and it wasn't full. And so while you did, you were one of eight people that voted to basically raise the bag cost and extend it when it wasn't needed. It would have been cheaper to have gotten that half a million dollars in many ways by just taxing everybody 1% more and getting them ready for what's going to be higher property taxes. You all kind of like the bags, so that, this question doesn't really work now. But, but let's take 30 seconds and just, you know, the bags aren't very good. If we're all going to pay 250 a week or 350 a week or whatever for bags, you really want ones that work. I'd rather see us take and raise taxes 1% on everybody and get rid of the bags, which goes from two to one in my household, and get the really good ones like we did during coronavirus.
So I'll tell you why that doesn't work, because if you raise it 1%, we can go back...
It's 500,000, so that's 1%.
Correct. During, during COVID, what we saw was, once we eliminated the requirement for purple bags, the increase in trash was as expected. So the 1% that we might anticipate based on our current usage is not going to work. There's going to be an increase. If people are not required to go out and, and purchase the purple bags, they throw out more stuff. And so our costs increase, and the 1% that you think going in ends up being 2% that you're, you're spending.
Okay. I'm going to counter, and then let everybody else get there for 30 seconds. But we're losing the free recycling. So the free, so the recycling and the trash is all the same price now in the next contract. So there is no savings. Whether they throw it out or recycle it, it's all going to be the same cost now.
It is, but that's why I go back to reducing, reusing, and recycling. It's all part of the same thing. And what I'll say, and I know you in particular don't like the purple bags. When I moved to Concord over a decade ago, I was shocked that there were no purple bags yet. I grew up in Dover. When I was in first grade, we designed the first designs for the first pay-as-you-throw bags. So Concord's 20 years behind what Dover was doing, and I can tell you that if you look at it, you know, the amount of money that we end up spending goes down significantly when people are forced to pay a consumption tax.
Either way, they're going to pay, that was what I'm trying to say.
But not everybody. It's going to be...
Sure. The city's going to pay either way, because whether it's 100 pounds of trash or 100 pounds of recycling, it's all going to be the same dip price.
Well, but ideally, we're going to figure out ways to reduce the amount of solid waste and move to composting. I mean, there, there are things we can do to facilitate, because I don't want to spend all kinds of money on solid waste. That's certainly what I'm not interested in doing.
All right. So in fairness, I'm going to give everybody a chance, so let's go with Taylor, and we'll go through, and everybody can have a chance to talk about, and more about trash.
So I just, something that stood out that you mentioned, so the increase during COVID because people were able to use their own bags, was that just due to people staying home and consuming more? I know, you know, I myself, I can throw stuff out when I go to work or, you know, other things like that, so I don't know if there's a correlation there that was or wasn't accounted for. Just thought that I had something maybe worth exploring. I'd be all right with paying a little bit more for a higher-quality purple bag or, you know, additional sizes available.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll jump in quickly. I would really love to see us move to a model where we are not consuming as much...
I would really love to see us move to a, a model where we are not consuming as much. I know that's idealistic, it's pie in the sky, but it just seems that we're getting caught up in these purple bags that are flashpoint for people in the city. And we just really need to change the paradigm to be using less and recycling more. And I don't, I don't have the answer on how to do that citywide, but maybe we start in the schools. In 20 years from now, it'll change.
I'd just like to add to that, that I agree a pilot program with our younger residents to make, lead a cultural shift may be exactly where we need to go with this. And young people are worried about climate change and local climate action. And, you know, if we give them an opportunity to lead, I think we will see a cultural shift. And I think we will see improvements in living more efficiently and making use of these other avenues.
I agree with almost everything my colleagues have said here. I mean, I think the, the purple bags are occasionally frustrating. We've all had them rip on us. It's annoying. I think at this point in human evolution, we can solve that problem. I mean, I think if you look at maybe bioplastics or some sort of biodegradable material as an alternative, it would be one way to sort of get something for everyone. I think in general, I'll just, you know, add that I'm a big believer in taxing things that are bad, such as garbage, and limiting taxes as much as possible on things that are good, such as economic development. So just another one last shout out for the purple bags.
Excellent. So we'll tighten up the next round. So a number of candidates this year have mentioned, and actually in past years, too, have, have talked about increasing the tax base and economic development. Kevin, let's go with you, and then we'll go this way again. Name three things exactly that you would do if elected to expand economic development.
Okay. Well, as I said before, I think we have to look at the institutional sectors in Concord, and there are ways to leverage those. Concord Hospital's been growing tremendously with services now shifting from other towns and cities to Concord. That's led to tremendous growth. How do we build off of that for ancillary services and related products that go with that? I think we're all fans of local food. I think that's another area where I'd like to see, both within the forest products sector and supporting local food. And that can be everything from pick your own to agritourism, which is often necessary for farmers to, to make the numbers work.
Good. Judith, three ideas.
Three ideas. I'd like to start with looking at zoning, which would allow us to build more mixed-use properties. And those developments address both housing and invite businesses in with this idea of walkable villages and improving pedestrian and cycle infrastructure. I think we should also capitalize on the improvements we made to Main Street, which was a hugely successful project to the credit of the mayor and the team that he worked with. We need to look at the second story above Main Street rather than sprawl out. We have space where we can build up in this city without changing the character of the street or the community. And thirdly, we need to take a look at what we can do here that is adjacent to what we're currently doing and capitalize on that and invite those businesses in.
Great, yeah, thank you. So the mixed-use developments are a great opportunity for the city. There's one that is being proposed at exit 13, near where the old drive-in movie theater used to be. That would bring housing, it would bring restaurants, it would bring possibly some retail and some services in one area. This is an attractive model that's been used around the country that I think that we could use here, maybe on the mall site. That's what could be put there as well. This will be attractive for people to move here and for businesses to move here. Before, we can do much with economic development. We have to be able to have people afford housing to be able to work in these businesses. And so that's one that has to be addressed and has to be solved. And then, wouldn't it be great to have high tech in the city of Concord? And we had an economic development for a director for a little while, didn't work out, but I would love to see somebody with more know-how come in and attract some of those high-tech companies to come to the city.
Great. So I think you're cribbing my notes because I have right here. You know, everyone's talking about service-based and mixed-use, but we really need to look into the future, long-term. So high-tech, bringing in these businesses that are going to set roots here and be here for a long time. Service is great. Service is lots of jobs, but service can occasionally be flash in a pan. For these long-term industries, we need to bring in people. We need to encourage people to want to move here. We need to bring in the best and the brightest. We have great schools, we have great parks, we have great reasons to want to live here. In order to have economic development, though, we need people, people to fill those jobs. And in order to have economic development, we need the city to advocate for itself. We need to have a city that's willing to say, to call up some high-tech company and say, you need to open your server farm here, you need to open your battery plant here, you need to come to Concord.
Okay. I'm more than three, but I'll, I'll try and limit myself. So the first thing, which we, the mayor put together, an ad hoc fee committee last year, one of the things we looked at was our development fees and how they compared to our, I'll say our competitors in the state. So we, we took some steps with respect to those. Obviously, we don't know in the first year how, how that's going to play out, but I, I think over time, we're going to see some benefit to that. Second thing is continuing to do public-private partnerships. So exit 17, I think, is a great example where the city made an investment with respect to the circle there. The developer put in money to some of the other infrastructure improvements. And it's amazing how, how much of a difference that has made up there. We're bringing additional tax revenue. I think this year, we're going to release about 15% from the, from the TIP, which will really help about residents at Pennacook who are paying the highest school taxes in the city. So that would be the second thing. And then the third piece, I would say, is continuing to invest in infrastructure. We've seen that there's a, a plan for redevelopment of the mall. Big thing we need to make sure is do we have the existing infrastructure in place to support that level of development? And if we don't, we need to start investing in it now.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk about the mall for just a minute because it's a really interesting project, and I want to make this one quick. But, you know, the city has undergone, undergone a study of all of the sewer pipes in that area. And I believe it's this month's meeting that's October, we're into October, so it's, I think you're going to talk about it this month's meeting. It's a $26 million investment before those apartments got built, based on the studies that they have, which I find kind of shocking, only because it really isn't that old. And, and, and all of the sewer pipes are, you know, have been in the 75 to 100-year plane. Let's take 30 seconds and go this way. And, you know, that's going to be a big commitment before anything gets built there or in the outlying areas around the, the lots on Chief Davis Road and.
Sure. So, so part of it is its capacity. So even with the, the mall, you know, not being what we once thought it would be, there's been significant economic development out there, there's been additional residents going out there. So a lot of that capacity that you would think we would have with the mall, you know, folding up operations, has been used up. I mean, not completely, but, but we can see down the road. And I think the, the city manager has, you know, very wisely started the conversation. Hey, guys, if we want to be serious about redeveloping this space, let's make sure we've got the infrastructure in place to be able to do that.
The one good benefit is, of course, with water and sewers, that you can amortize it over long periods of time.
Correct.
Any, any ideas, saying, you know, you're going to be, you're on the council, they're going to talk about $26 million in, in water and sewer repairs that they need to make in that entire area. How would you handle that?
Yep, so I would want to take another look at that number. 26 million does seem awful high right off the first bat. However, it does make sense that there does need to be some investments in the infrastructure there. You're moving from a mall to high-use residential, high-use commercial. So goes to say there, there is going to be some infrastructure upgrades that need to happen. And like you said, you can amortize it.
Matt, let me tweak the question for you. You know, the state, you're a state rep as well. You also run a school. And, I mean, the state has created some grant funds for those things. That, this might, would this be something where that $100 million for, for housing that's available, could the city tap into that?
I don't know specifically how the city could tap into it. I'd have to look into that. Certainly, if we can, we should. We shouldn't let that money go by. I would think we also need to have a, a discussion about where we locate these new developments in the city of Concord. Putting added pressure on someplace like the Heights where we already have a high concentration of residences, and the population density in the Heights is pretty high, and it's not that same way in other parts of the city. So I think we need to sort of have some balance there as well.
Judith, you and I both work, both live in Ward 5. I work remotely in Ward 5. I don't know where you work. But in keeping in that thought, there has been, there's been a lot of discussion in the city on why there are no duplex and multifamily houses in our neighborhood. I'm on Little Contra, right around the corner from your house. Is it, is it, would, would zone, would some of your zoning ideas be to, take 30 seconds to tell us, you know, would it be of the accessibility to build more multi-unit housing in our neighborhood so that more people would have access to our great neighborhood?
Yes.
And not be stuck on the Heights?
Yes, it would. The proposed zoning, which is a move towards form-based code, encourages, and first of all, switching to the zoning will make more existing properties in our neighborhood and other parts of the city already in compliance, which will save taxpayers and the city money from having to go apply for variances, right? So right out of the gate, it has a positive effect. But yes, it does increase the ease of large houses in, in around Ward 5 to add accessory dwelling units, which can be beneficial to renters and also encourage young people who graduate from college and can't afford to find their own place in the city of Concord to come home without necessarily coming home, and also allows seniors to age in place.
Sure. Kevin, you're in the business. Tell us, are they all wrong or are we all right, or what's the deal?
If I could first answer the water sewer question quickly.
Sure.
Some of the water and sewer geek, we deal with it all day long. And I think one of the benefits of having mixed-used neighborhoods is that residential tends to use water sewer services, you know, late at night, in the morning, while businesses use them during the day. And similar to energy, there is benefit to sort of spreading out that, that usage and that demand. It can prolong the life of the system, less wear and tear, that sort of thing. And also, water and sewer technology's come a long way in, in 25, 30 years. So I think it's worth exploring what those new systems can, can do. To go back to.
No, go right back.
To go back to housing, yeah, I mean, like I said, I think we need to make it easier to build housing. Things like parking restrictions for, for small units downtown where people probably don't want or need a car. I think the accessory dwelling unit bill that came out seven years ago, I think it was, is great. 750, 750 square feet is a little small. Maybe for one person, it's okay. Could that maybe be bumped up to 1,200, 1,300, 1,400? I mean, there's a lot that can be done.
Cool. Okay. So there's been a lot of discussion earlier this year in the council about paying for childcare, stipends for attending meetings, and even travel expenses for city councilors, board members, and attendees. I immediately thought of you and also Dave Parker, who spent 15 years on, on, in meetings and countless hours, and how we would ever pay him $50 an hour would be bankrupt for all the years he was on, all the years that our planning and zoning people have done and stayed with it forever. Anyway, sticking with just councillors for a moment, is it time to increase councillors' annual stipend? And if yes, how much did that be? Instead of having the city pay for childcare for city councilors or Ubers or whatever they may need to get to meetings, Kevin, let's start with you.
I mean, I'm not in it for the money. I mean, I think this question comes from looking at a diversity, equity, inclusion committee and trying to expand diversity, equity, inclusion, and talking about stipends for, for, for folks to broaden the scope of people that can join, and I do support that. But I, for councillors in general, I don't see the need to increase stipends.
Okay. So just to be clear, the proposal that was made recently was to pay for city councillors' childcare and other, other things. Whereas if you all got $3,000 instead of 1,000, you wouldn't need the city to pay for your childcare, you could pay for it yourself.
Interesting. I think the bottom line is about trying to remove barriers to civic engagement, to look at who we want to have a seat at the table and to think creatively about how we adjust that table. So again, not in it for the money, that stipend, perhaps that is the best use of the money. But I would love us to look at some data around adjusting meeting times, where are meetings located? Perhaps they travel? Could there be onsite childcare? What would those sorts of costs be? And then come back to this conversation because it's not about the dollars as much as it's about creating access to government for all of Concord's residents.
And certainly having meetings at noon on a Friday don't do that. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. City councillors get $1,000 of taxpayer money. No, I don't think that we should be paying for childcare for city councilors to come to meetings. I think there are ways that we can do that. We can come together as a community and do that, we can change the meeting times. Yeah, I don't go to ADRC meetings because they're in the middle of the day and I need to work. City council meetings are in the evening, and you may have a lot of phone calls and things like that. I'm willing to help my neighbor if she wants to run for city council or he wants to run. I'm willing to share babysitting duties. I'm willing to take a community approach to that rather than the taxpayers paying for it.
Two years ago, Tony, when I was running for mayor, we had this conversation as it related to mayor, Jim and I, and we used Manchester as an example. Did we want Concord to become another Manchester of, do we want the mayor, city council to be full-time jobs? And Jim and I both agreed, no, we don't want that. And I think once you start talking about increasing the amount of the stipend, start talking about ancillary services, it just becomes a, you know, snowball effect towards becoming full-time. And this is something that we do because we're passionate about our community, not because it's a financial thing.
No. I, I, my wife and I both work, we have three kids. My children have attended many city council meetings. There might be a child in the back there, but he wanted to come. So no, I mean, it's certainly, it's, it's working together with your community. I mean, I know various school board members who brought their children. You know, it's, I've made arrangements for people, you know. The hard ones are when those budget meetings go till 11:00. So I, I understand the issue. I mean, I've, I've lived it. So, you know, if, if, if people think that a solution to it is to increase the stipend so that people can afford those types of things, I'm happy to have that conversation. I personally am not asking for that. I mean, that's a choice that I made. I work very hard to make sure my wife and I can cover everything. And it's a challenge, but, you know, that's a choice that I made to get involved. And as far as, I think Matt's idea about taking meetings on the road, I actually, during COVID, I, I suggested moving some meetings up to the Heights and taking it on the road. And it's certainly something that I would definitely be interested in doing because I do think it's important to, to give people an opportunity to come in. The more input we have, the better decisions that we make.
And the city certainly has enough municipal buildings, the schools letting us use them all for voting now. Who knew that would happen?
Shocked.
Okay, so you guys have been really great. Let me get one more in, we'll make it tight, maybe 30 to 45 seconds. And I want to kind of wrap in with the rec department, Memorial Field Study, as well as the golf course, which seems to be a hot-button issue these days with, with some golfers wanting a new clubhouse and some thinking it's extravagant to even have a golf course, even though it's the oldest municipal golf course, and others thinking it's a great recreational facility. So I guess we'll go, Nathan, we'll start with you. What do you think about the new golf course plan? And talk about Memorial Field and that partnership with the school district to make Memorial feel better.
Sure. So Beaver Meadows Clubhouse has been there since 1966. I do think it's time to make an investment in, in replacing it. I mean, I think it is really a community center. Everybody talks about it being a golf course, but we have cross-country skiing, we have ice skating, we have simulators. Obviously, the golf course is what derives the revenue to allow us to, to use it for these other purposes. But I do think it's time, we need to, you know, take a hard look. You know, cost is going to be, I'm sure, significant, but I do think it's time to, to do something there. With respect to Memorial Field, I was very glad to have the, the school district step up and, and agree to, to start looking at that. I attended a great meeting, I think it was last week, two weeks ago, I've already forgotten, or here, actually, at Concord High. And the input we got from community members was amazing. I mean, people who have lived in the city have coached kids, you know, for decades, and their input in what they're seeing. And I think that's an investment that we really need to make for our kids in the future.
Great.
So Beaver Meadows is actually my polling place, that's where I vote. So I do see its use as a community center. However, I do believe that certain things do need to be revenue neutral. I believe that, you know, our parks are great, those are free and available for everyone. But when you take something that, you know, generally people do have to pay to access when you're talking about golf, when you're talking about using the trails, things like[1775.65] that, it's just quite a hefty bill. And I would like to see a way to minimize that cost, a way to not have that be incurred as heavily by the taxpayer, the alternate uses for that facility, to try to recoup that revenue sooner.
To me, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about Memorial Field, which is used by the school district and by anybody who wants to use it for running, for playing tennis or whatever else. And then you're talking about something that, yes, there is skiing, I ski there and there's ice skating, but it's a much more narrow focus of what that's used for. And I don't think that that is the best use of tax dollars for the city at large. I think Memorial Field would be a better use. But we also have to remember, whether it's a school district raising taxes to build a new middle school or it's a city council raising taxes, it's all coming from the same taxpayers. And so if we need a middle school, and it was a great meeting last week about the new middle school, we have to maybe shelve some other things to pay for it, or else we're going to be paying taxes that nobody in the city has paid before.
Great. I think it's great to have the school and the city partnering. The school is already the largest user of Memorial Field, though it is a distinct issue from the golf course because of the broad usage. In regards to the proposed $4.5 million clubhouse project, I have had questions as a citizen sitting at city council meetings. I'd like to address those questions with some real detailed conversations, giving information to taxpayers. So I'd like to know if that entire number needs to be spent at once? Could it be a phased project? How, if we invest that money, can we increase citywide usage of this space, right? There are many people who already feel it's an amenity, but if we're gonna invest in it as taxpayers, we need to make sure it's accessible to everyone. And finally, I'd like to know about fundraising opportunities as most of our other recreational projects seek fundraising and Beaver Meadow has not done that.
Yeah, I personally like golf, but I don't think taxpayers should pay $5 million so I can have a cocktail on the veranda after my round. And I think this also applies to economic development. Again, the city should not be spending taxpayer money to develop office space or a catering hall and the like that will compete with the private sector. Turning to Memorial Field, wonderful, strong tradition of athletics here in Concord. It's a very central range of facilities there, they can be used by a lot of different people. I think that's a better use of taxpayer money.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna give you one minute and 15 seconds each because I think that's what I got, right, guys? Oh, you rock. Thank you so much. So we had Lanes go first this time, we're gonna let the incumbent go this time and then we're gonna make it easy so I can time it, we'll go down to Kevin from there, okay?
Okay. So thank you once again, Carpet TV, Tony. I hope you will come out to vote on November 7th. Hope you'll consider voting for me, Nathan Fennessey. We've got a big challenge ahead. As Tony mentioned in the beginning, we're gonna have a transition in leadership. The mayor is gonna be replaced and I think it's gonna be really important to continue some continuity, particularly with the chance for, you know, at least one new at-large member and potentially 10 new ward councillors. So I think I've got the experience, I've got the know-how, I've got the willingness to work with others and I hope you will support me on November 7th.
Again, wanna thank Tony, Patch, Concord TV, Concord High School for hosting this event. And I wanna thank the residents of Concord for participating in this part of democracy. As I said, firm believer that democracy and voting are essential parts of participating in government. So I wanna thank everyone that's watching this for watching and voting. Encourage everyone to vote. If you're looking for somebody who's hardworking, a good listener, wants to build this community long-term, if you've liked all that, like what I said, please remember to vote for me.
Yeah, thank you to everybody involved, Tony for making this happen, Concord TV, the high school. So you're not gonna go wrong with two of us up here. I think that this is a great group of people. Think about the future of all residents in the city of Concord. I'm concerned that there is, the affordability issue is going to drive a lot of people out. I have, you know, 18-year-old and 20-year-old daughters, I have 70-something-year-old parents. Can my parents stay in their homes and can my children return home to raise families? And can our newest Americans find places to live in the city that aren't concentrated in a couple of areas of the city? So affordability, living here and getting inclusiveness, getting everybody together in the city of Concord to have a role in their government, that's what I stand for and hope to bring to the city council.
I echo everyone else in thanking you. This has been a lot of fun. It's my first debate, so happy to be, happy to have been here. I'm a lifelong educator and I know that having conversations with people and giving them information empowers them to make the best choices for their own lives. That's what I would serve to do as a city councillor, to listen deeply and then to bring those voices to the table. Along the way, I hope to break down barriers to civic engagement so that we can look at economic development, affordability, diversity, equity, inclusion, climate action, and with the knowledge of what our residents want. So if that interests you at all, I'd like to get to know you better, so vote for Judith Kurtz on November 7th.
All right, well, this has been a lot of fun and I really appreciate, appreciate this, Tony, and appreciate you all. I think there's a newfound sort of sense of civic engagement in Concord and it's really exciting and it's really great to see and I think that's showing itself here tonight by having five candidates for at-large. I plan on living in Concord for the rest of my life, really taking a long-term view of things, but at the same time, understanding the nuts and bolts. And I go back to the clean energy transition and housing, which are just so critical right now, but they are fairly technical sectors and I think it's really important to have someone with the background and the expertise in order to move those things forward. So I would love to hear from as many people as possible. Please reach out and please remember to make a plan to vote on November 7th. Thank you.
So election day is November 7th and you know what's really interesting about the following five people is, unlike the other races, you get to vote for two, which is really cool. So two of them will be elected, they'll serve four-year terms there. Every two years, we get to vote two at-large councillors on. Patch's online voter guide will be up online about a week before the election and includes all of their candidate profiles as well as all of our election stories. We should have it up probably before Halloween. Voters cast ballots in the city from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM at all 10 wards. Should be noted that while Taylor, you vote in the Beaver Meadow polling location, it's being moved to the elementary school this year. And also, Ward 1 voters too will move from the parish to the Merrimack Valley High School. So there are two new polling locations that you need to vote and know about again. So again, thank you to Concord TV and the New England Take. I'm Tony Shanella. Thanks again for tuning in, we'll see you next time.